Good morning. Let's call to order a Board of County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, June 9.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
President?
Commissioner Dickinson, Commissioner Dunn.
Right.
All right, now the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, this invocation will be led by Pastor James Callaway, the First Baptist Church in Ottawa. Morning Pastor.
Good morning. Let us pray. O Lord, our Lord, how majestic is your name in all the earth. You have set your glory above the heavens. From the lips of children and infants, you have ordained praise because of your enemies, to silent the four and the avengers. Into your presence, the Franklin County Commissioners are here to conduct the affairs of our county. We ask your blessing upon each commissioner, their family, the staff, and all county workers. Have mercy on our COVID-19 world, our state, and our county. Please continue watching over us and keeping us safe. Now Almighty, let this meeting be productive and in a professional manner. In your name we pray, amen.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any public comment?
No.
Okay. Our consent agenda today is to approve our June 2nd meeting minutes. There are motion to approve the consent agenda. So move.
Second. Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. Our first item of business lies with Larry Walroth, our planning and building director. It is a rezoning application. Good morning Larry.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Looks like I am in the agenda this morning.
Yep.
The first item of business will be a consideration for the rezoning of approximately five acres. This was filed by the, well, this one, excuse me, I got this out of order here. This is 12.53 acres with an existing home. They wanted to divide that off of a much larger tract of land that had a very unusual shape because it was five inches of a mile deep, and it's hard to get the proportions not to exceed a four to one lot length-to-width ratio. The planning commission, however, does have the ability to waive that under certain circumstances as provided in the county subdivision regulations. And as a result, the county planning commission did approve the waiver of the lot length-to-width requirements for this particular land division so that they could go forward dividing the existing house out and allowing the other son then to build a house nearby so they could take care of some elderly parents. And the planning commission has forwarded a recommendation to you for the approval of this rezoning request and directing staff then to amend our official zoning map accordingly. Otherwise, it's a pretty straightforward land division. The only exception was the overall lot length-to-width ratio. I have nothing further to add unless any of you have questions.
Larry, does that other frontage, is that, it looks like it's all trees or something like that, the rest of that frontage there on that property?
It's over 300 feet, so
Okay.
It has a pretty good frontage on it. It's just that it's so deep
Right.
to get to that four to one, that you'd have to have roughly 750 foot of frontage to meet the, you know, the four to one lot length-to-width requirement.
Okay. Any more questions for Larry on this one?
Looks reasonable. I'll make a motion to approve.
All right.
Second.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yeah.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. Second. The business also resulted in application.
This is a request filed by Mr. Funk to rezone approximately five acres from an A1 to the RE residential estate zone. This matter was also considered by the planning commission, and in doing so, they realized that the remainder tract then would not meet the minimum for agricultural zone district. That's the remainder of the tract after you take out the five acres. And consequently, it had to go to the A2, which is a transitional agricultural zoning district. So we're rezoning both the remainder and the five acre tract that's being sold. The purpose for this division is to allow for the sale of the five acres and the construction of a new home. Again, the planning commission has forwarded a recommendation to you to approve this rezoning request and directing staff then to amend the official zoning map accordingly.
All right. This one's pretty straightforward. Any questions for Larry? Anyone like to approve rezoning application 2104-1859 and amend our map accordingly?
Motion to approve. Second. Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. All right. And our third item's also rezoning application.
The third matter is a consideration for a piece that's going to be annexed to the city of Richmond.
Princeton.
Excuse me. This is for the new store that's being proposed on the east side of 59 Highway across from the cemetery. And the result of that would be, they will, this would allow them to move forward with the purchase of the property as well as starting their construction. And I think that we've tried to work with the city to expedite this so we could get this, everything started here in a timely manner. And that was a request from the developer themselves. Their architect had submitted a lot of plans and different things to the county, and we have reviewed those, and they would be consistent with our requirements, which are very similar to what the city has. And I think the, working with the city attorney, that we have reached a reasonable recommendation for the rezoning, to go from the RE residential estate zone, which is presently there, to the C2, which is a commercial zoning district. So we're trying to cooperate with the city and move this project forward. I think it's going to be a benefit to the county as well as to the city. Again, the recommendation from the planning commission was for the approval and directing staff to modify the map accordingly if you choose to approve the rezoning from the RE to the C2 zoning district.
There's been good engagement between the county and the city of Princeton on this. I believe they just had a meeting this week, and Commissioner Dickinson was there, and Paul Bean with FCDC was there. And so I know the city commission down there is, they're anxious to move forward on this, so would definitely recommend approval.
Just allow them to move forward with trying to get the service extensions, sewer and water. So we feel that it's a real positive effort on behalf of the county to cooperate with the city as well as the developer in this manner.
Okay.
I'd like to say thank you Larry for this, because this is a sign of what we want to see in the public works. I mean, not planning and zoning and public work, but it's that communication with the smaller towns and organizations. And this was a deal of him trying to find a way for that to happen for him, not throw a roadblock at for him, but to actually work with him, because it's going to benefit all of us.
Ways they can, not reasons they can't, right?
Yeah.
Yep. I agree. All right, well, if we're in support of this, someone would need to make a motion to approve rezoning application 2104-1863 and amend our county zoning map accordingly.
Go ahead.
So move.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes.
We both want to see that.
I got a spot right there.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, we are certainly happy to see it move forward, and have worked closely with the clerk to make certain that we have kept them informed of all the steps that we've gone through and have outlined for them, the procedures for the annexation in this case. So I think everything's kind of a, you know, a go. Unfortunately, it's got a little billboard on the property that they're going to have to deal with, and I don't know what the lease arrangements are on it, but they're going to have to do something with that darn thing.
All right.
Next item of business is also a rezoning request to rezon approximately six and a half acres from an A1 to the RE residential estate zoning. The purpose for this rezoning is to basically satisfy the estate. These people want to divide the property, giving the house and 6.6 acres to the daughter, and the remainder of that would be given to their son. So you see the large remainder tract, several acres more, but its values are pretty close to the same. And consequently, they feel that they've treated their children appropriately, even though it may be some time before they actually deed this over to the kids. Again, the planning commission has reviewed this and find it to be consistent with the comprehensive plan as well as our zoning and subdivision regulations, and have forwarded a recommendation to you to approve this rezoning request and direct staff to modify our official zoning map. This is a pretty straightforward rezoning request. We've processed roughly upwards of 100 of these in a year's time, and I don't think there are any hidden agendas here that we need to be concerned with.
All right. Anyone interested in making a motion to approve application 2104-1860 and amend our map accordingly?
Make the motion for it.
Okay. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. This item is the final plat. Go ahead Larry.
The next item, as you've indicated, Mr. Chairman, is the final plat for the Funk Estate subdivision. This is going to give consideration to the five acres that you just approved for rezoning. There has already been an opportunity to divide this property under the provisions of our subdivision regulations wherein you're entitled to a one-time lot split, and after that, it's a subdivision plat. So that's the purpose for this subdivision plat, rather than it being the more traditional lot split. It does satisfy all the requirements of our zoning and our subdivision requirements, and therefore, the planning commission has approved that. We would ask that you authorize the chairman to endorse this, accepting all easements and rights of ways that are shown on the face of the plat.
All right. Anyone care to make a motion to that extent then?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. And another final plat. Go ahead Larry.
This is somewhat unique in that it's two lots that are presently in Wheatland Farms that are owned by the same owner, and he would like to modify the boundary to take in the tree line on the parcel that he's already developed on. The other tract would be vacant. It's vacant today, and it will remain vacant unless someone else wants to build on it. The applicant has no desire to build at this time on that particular lot. The lots do meet all of our minimum requirements for the three-acre single-family residential zoning district as well as our subdivision regs. So what it is, is just a boundary line adjustment, basically, but since it was platted, it requires a plat to undo what was previously done and a new plat that shows what's being proposed today. So that's the reason for this particular subdivision plat. The planning commission has approved this and would recommend that you authorize the chairman to endorse the plat, accepting all easements and vacating easements that were previously there as a part of this new subdivision plat.
All right. Is there a motion to authorize chairman to endorse the final plat and accept the easements right away?
Sergeant.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. All righty.
I have the, these regents here for you to sign.
Okay, we'll get that after the meeting. Thank you Larry.
Thank you.
Go to staff reports. Derek?
Yeah, so Dawn and I, as well as Casey, are going to Wellsville shortly after this meeting. We'll be joining Paul Bean over there, about 15 other folks for a strategic planning session. As all of you are aware, Wellsville's just exploding with development, and the purpose of it is to just see what we can do to, I think they're doing a great job up there, but see what we can do to help them maybe come up with a plan, kind of a strategic growth plan. Paul's done a great job of quarterbacking all this, has the, it's the Docking Institute, correct, coming in to help with that. And so I think it's going to be a fantastic use of time, and I'm excited to do it. And so that'll be from 10 to 2 today. As all of you are aware, we have a study session on Monday, going to be a fairly substantial study session. We'll, I think our auditor's going to come. Janet will talk to you about that. But then we'll have the first discussion, it's not our first discussion, but the first discussion involving potentially integrating the historical society into the visitor's center. The board asked us to put a committee together. We did that. It had Commissioner Waymire and Commissioner Harris. We met with a couple of historical society board members. There were staff from both organizations present, and we came up with a recommendation on how best to do that. Monday, we will present that recommendation, and then we'll hear from a couple volunteers, hear from the historical society, and just start the discussion on how we can best do that integration. And then after that, and I'll let Janet get into this, as all of you've got your budget books, but we have our individual budget meetings where I think for you, Commissioner Harris, that is really about as in-depth as the board gets, and we typically walk through basically every single line of the budget during those meetings. And so it's a great time to ask questions, get feedback. I know our budget hearing, which is normally in August, I think it'll be September this year. That's normally, I mean, the last few years, that's been a 10 or a 12-minute meeting, if that, because we've already poured through the budget with a fine-tooth comb. So a lot of the work goes into it, at least from the board's perspective, on Monday and Tuesday. So got your books. If there's anything you need from either of us in advance of that, please let us know. I believe that's all I have, Cole. Thank you.
All right, Casey?
I don't have that.
All right, Paul, anything? No? David Lee?
All right, so we continue to work on roads and washouts and whatnot that were damaged with the floods here recently. Since last week, we've repaired or replaced five different culverts. That's crossroad tubes and some driveways. We fixed at least 10 different washout areas and five different ditching-related projects that we need to take care of. And then, I think it was yesterday, we removed some trees from a creek channel on Alabama that was really negatively impacting the drainage in that area. Over the next several weeks, we're going to continue this sort of work. We've got four crossroad tubes that we're going to be replacing along with the associated ditch work for those projects. We have two strictly ditching projects that we're going to be doing, and then we've got a couple of entrances to install, but that number's going to change. It seems like every week, we're getting multiple requests for entrances, so I anticipate that number to go up as well. So that's going to handle the next couple of weeks, and we've got, some of our larger projects are on the horizon. Just this morning, I got an update from Circle C Paving on the Chip Seal project. There, the weather has delayed them, so they're now looking at, they're about a month behind. We're hoping late June, early July for this. Looks like it's going to be late July, early August for this, which is still well within the timeframe that we were hoping that they would be here, but it's not going to be quite as soon as we had hoped. So that's coming up. I also received the proposal this morning from SCS on the landfill project, and so I will be reviewing that, and I'll certainly share that with Derek. And then when we're ready, we'll be bringing that to you probably within the next couple of weeks. So that'll be good to get that one underway. I've got a call in to CFS on the Jackson Road Bridge deck project to see how we're coming with that. I've got field check planned, so we should be ready to go to bid on that fairly quickly. And then a lot of my time has been spent on FEMA documentation lately. Yesterday, I was able to submit the category A, which is debris, submitted that to our KDEM representatives, and they'll be going over that and then ultimately submitting that on to FEMA for their approval. And now I've turned my attention to the category C, which is the roads and bridges, and that's quite a big project there. Just on the debris removal, we had over 1,500 personnel hours. And with the roads and bridges, it's going to be well over 10,000 hours. So there'll be a lot of, you know, hopefully FEMA reimburses us for everything, but I anticipate it being a fairly large number once we get that finalized and submitted. So that's my report for today.
Question for you, David.
Yes, sir.
Is that material there in Rantoul on the Rails Street right away, is that the material they're going to be using?
I believe so.
Yeah.
They have stockpiled at three or four different locations.
Yeah, it's quite a pile. I figured if I drove through there and it's a little red.
Yep.
So I figured it's, I figured it'd be there. And I know that's just nothing you guys did, but it happened. There's several asphalt places that's been washed away from the flooding. Then hopefully we're going to try and get to all them before they...
We have, we have been doing a little bit of patching kind of in between some of this stuff, and we will continue that. We have got a couple of spots where we're going to have to have Kilo come in.
That's, well, is one of them below the Middle Creek Bridge there?
I haven't specifically looked at those.
It's pretty big.
But we will.
I can't see I can find it. Patch that one. It's pretty big.
So we'll...
Not deep, but it's bigger than that table, or bigger.
We have, we have a few of those locations, and one of the crossroad tubes that we've got to replace is on, oh, where Virginia or Vermont Road kind of curves and then into Virginia down there. We've got a, it's kind of a large specialty tube that we're going to be putting in in the next couple of weeks. And that area that we'll have to cut out to be able to do that work, we'll have to have Kilo come back in and patch over that.
It's one of them, but I mentioned it maybe before, but I know it's been flooded with all the rain, but is that dip there in Vermont and Rock Creek, right there in the city of Rantoul, where it makes that big dip, there's a pretty good chunk going out of there too. Not a dangerous thing, but it's before we chip it.
Right. No, we'll be, we'll be looking at that. And we've also, there's a couple of structures on John Brown just east of Princeton that, there's some pretty good dips coming into those bridge structures that we're going to, we're still trying to decide how we're going to tackle that, but we've got to shore up each end of those bridges and then take care of those approaches and that. So those are, those are all things that are, that are going to be coming up in the next. So, and now that we've got a little extra time due to the timing of the Chip Seal, that'll, we'll be able to get those things done.
Thank you.
So as Derek alluded to, you have your budget books in front of you. The auditor will be here on Monday to just briefly go over the audit results with you. He's given Derek and I the 50,000-foot view, and he's going to come and get a little closer with you guys and let you know how the audit went this year. So your budget books do not have audited numbers. The numbers that are in there for 2020 are what we have. So there could still be some changes here after we get the audit results back and we get those in there. As you know, that we usually try to work off a solid platform of audited actuals so that we can get a solid foundation for the next budget year. So this is really out of the realm of what we normally do, but putting together this. But we can't wait any longer to get this in front of you guys to start reviewing these budgets. I visited with all the department heads yesterday, and they're all on the schedule that we have made, and I'll email you guys out the schedule that we plan to use to work off of when the department heads will be here. Of course, there's always some adjustments to that as we go, too. So I try to make it as flexible as possible by adding some different ones in at the top and bottom that, you know, maybe Derek and I cover. So if somebody takes a little longer or is a little shorter, we can kind of add in and make changes as we go. So while it's a guide, it's not set in stone. So as we get those results from Rodney next week on Monday, Amy and I will be going back and putting those audited numbers in, and if we have some that need change, we will get those out to you guys. So if you have any questions about the budget book, feel free to give me a holler. I'll take a look at it. And like I said, we've gone over this as best we can. Derek and I have met about each one of these budgets and feel like it's pretty good right now, but there still could be some changes.
And I completely agree with that. And this is not a critique of Rodney at all, but he, I think, bumped us to the back of the line this year in terms of, I think we were one of the last organizations he audited, which is just fine, but it did kind of put us a little behind our schedule. But we completely agree with her. I don't anticipate any major changes to those budget books, but I also know that Janet and I did not do the same level of tweaking to like some of the smaller stuff that we normally would because we're just waiting on those audited numbers. So I would go a little more firm in saying, I'm pretty well certain we'll tweak some small things once we've got those audited numbers. But what you've got in front of you is a great representation by and large of what it's going to look like. Like, there are not going to be big things that get added. It will just be tweaking some of the smaller stuff based on audited actuals from 2020 as opposed to what we believe our actuals were, and so...
So something that Rodney had to do this year for us, and pretty much every other organization he audits, is the single audit is what it's called, and it's for, if you receive over $750,000 from the federal government and over $750,000 from the federal government in grants. And so almost every single organization that Rodney audits, he had to do that for. So he was trying to make his schedule this year to keep like school districts together, to keep counties together. And so he normally starts with a lot of school districts just because they have to have their budget done at a different timeframe than what we do. So it usually works to have them done first. Well, then they took longer, which pushed us back. So definitely was a time-consuming process for Rodney this year, and he did have a lot more questions of us just based on that single audit. And he said it's not a lot more work, but it is a lot when you're looking at all those different programs and deciding which ones, according to the rules, you have to audit. So he has started the process to get our federal audit uploaded, and I got the log in yesterday, which he told me I would get before it was finalized online. So that is, is being completed at the same time, so.
A lot of work, too, that the public doesn't see. I mean, our auditor comes, and obviously, he does the audit, and, and we ask him to be as critical as he can be on us, but Janet is kind of the county's liaison to Rodney when he's doing that, so that takes a lot of her time. But also the department heads, I mean, they all have a job to do, like a day-to-day job. And while Rodney is here, I mean, it's, it's frequent that he has questions about something. So Dustin will need to drop what he's doing, for example, to come sit down and go through that. So just, I appreciate the work that county staff puts into this process because an audit's a, you know, it's a fairly significant undertaking, and it is a critical part of our budget process. I mean, we, that is the backbone of the 2020 actuals or the backbone of the, you know, the subsequent year's budgets, so.
And that's to say nothing of the work that they have to prepare ahead of time of Rodney coming, different departments have to bring, you know, various receipt books and all this. I mean, I probably have 10 like banker-sized boxes of information down in my office from what Rodney works with, where David's office brings down from solid waste and public works and noxious weeds, so he can review all of those reports. And the sheriff's department brings over receipts for all their different things they have going on, like offender registration and, and, you know, things like that. So it is a lot, a lot of work that our staff puts in for the audit to, to bring back a really good quality product from Rodney, so. Again, if you have any questions about the budget books or anything like that, as you start to go through them, don't hesitate to give me a call or shoot me an email, whatever way you like. Text me. I think most of you have my cell phone number, so.
All right. Commissioners' comments and board reports. Don?
I won't go into all the chambers. I went to Wellsville. I'll just hit, I'll do that later, but one main item of it was the discussion about our meetings today up there and how appreciative they are. And I sat down with Paul the other day. I want him to educate me, too, so, and I think it's going to be a really good deal. And I don't think he knows how much work Paul's put into it and brought in the evergreen to help pay for half of this project to be done, and I make sure the chamber up there realizes that, too, you know? So that, that's it.
All right. Hold on. Roy?
Yes. Friday morning, Midland Railroad's been storing coal cars or rolling cars on the railroad. They decided to move them out Friday morning without telling anybody, I would think. They blocked 59th Highway for, from an hour and a half to two hours, and Sand Creek Road was blocked for the same amount of time. I had a lot of complaints. The businesses, they had a lot of complaint. I wish the sheriff was here, because I bet they got calls. And anyway, Midland Railroad has not been a very friendly outlet to work with. All the farmers along Midland Railroad have had problems with them, and they do what they please. And here they go again, blocking the highway for that amount of time, and it caused a lot of confusion. Nobody had liked anybody to tell them what's going on or have a detour or anything like that, so it's pretty disappointing to be on the railroad for a block of the road. Did go out to seafood, which brought me back to reality, that there is flood, so. And I think the chamber did a good job of providing opportunities for a lot of activities downtown, and Legacy Square there Saturday, so.
All right. Nothing I need to add either, so time to look for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, sir?
Aye.
opposed, to adjourn.